...delay, thank you. Hi, how are you?
Oh, right. Dr. Manuco site has nothing on this, right?
Yeah, no, no, we'll take them out.
They've been in since two?
How are you doing? Good, good to see you.
Sorry, how was your... I was on the town and I pulled Dr. Sanchez's... Thanks for being here.
Rock out.
What's going on?
You gonna be there tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. I'm so excited.
Five fifteenish, five fifteen.
Oh, that late? Okay, I was gonna be there at four forty-five, but...
Well, I mean, the earlier the better.
Okay.
The... Uh, the, uh, the room is headed, it's gotta be like, do what you can wear.
Okay, and it's a booth?
It's booth.
Okay. Uh, what yard line is that?
About thirty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
Cool. Cool.
Thirty on the north side.
Okay. I'm excited. I wish we could do the game tonight, too.
I know, so why?
That's gonna be great. Maybe, 'cause Mayfield's...
Yeah, I do know Mayfield, we get up for...
For a rivalry game, yeah. Did you see what they did to each other's campuses?
No, I heard. Was it trash? What did, what did they do?
They, they tagged it. They tagged, they tagged each other's, yeah. But, like, bad. Bad, the vulgarity was horrible.
Where did they tag you? On the windows?
No, on the football locker room, their football storage facilities, all their athletic facilities. And then at Mayfield, they got the big, you know, in the middle, there's that big Trojan? Spray painted that, yeah. That's the worst I've seen it. Uh, aside from the fight.
There goes Cameron Bellers. Cross like a weapon.
Yeah.
Joseph Olbrich, who Dan Morris and Ollie O'Neal just... No more of that.
This isn't UFC.
Feel that clunk, that clutching of club. Oh, they must be showing all up.
Yeah, I know. Oh, man. That's funny. That's funny. Are you guys, is it on right now? Are you on air right now?
Yeah. We're starting at four, so...
I didn't hear anything.
So, transition. Johnson's later. Kind of affects damage.
Sanchez was... And, uh... And that's focused speculation.
Oh, wow.
It just depends on how quick, so we, we kinda figure thirty days for them to...
Then get started, you already know anyone, everyone.
When you hit it on January 11th.
Yeah.
I don't know, and they might talk about that tonight. Skype.
Oh, really? Cool. I'm gonna miss out on the Sanchez. I'm excited to get a new super. I love the guy. He's awesome. Yeah. So, what do you think held this?
He, he's gonna go back in January.
In muscle, huh?
Mm-hmm. Wow. I asked him, I'd be happy to. In January.
Wow, he already has it set up?
Yeah.
Good for him. Cameron Castillo. Cameron Bellers, my president. Oh, oh, okay. Who's that part, Centennial? I didn't meet you. It's early. I did, too. I got ready this morning, I got to school, and everyone's all Centennial out, and I'm like, "I'm wearing blue." Whoops. Are you teaching or learning? Oh, really?
I'm hitting Miami.
Are you really? God. That's awesome.
What? Um, you know, it's, it's pretty intense. Get back to your team.
Yeah.
I don't think it's really playing me well. Crazy, you're gonna stay in some kind of...
Did it? Wow, interesting.
I've never been a homework person, anyway. And really, I'm gonna do this.
Especially for homework. Yeah.
Where are you looking at, Mount?
I see. And if not, maybe like in Indiana. Love to go to Notre Dame, but I hear it's real cold up there. Yeah. Maybe follow my dad's footsteps. He wants to go back to school, actually.
Really? What does he wanna do?
Well, he got a new job in the field. Still, well, it's now in the field of intelligence. So, I guess, uh, actual graduate study area is for intelligence. So, I don't know, maybe we'll be in school together.
You'll have to tell him when the day was, if he had, you know, like, he just wanna have twenty minutes to go up there and...
Oh, really? You're right?
He'd always give me, give me our time as a...
Last Moreno, yeah. That's funny. Yeah, I know. Oh, I'm sure he wishes he was in the field more. So, did you know Jamie Conna?
Yes. And, uh, I got, I got to feel better a few now.
Oh, did you? I try and go back to Columbus every year for a game. There, actually, my mom is Jamie's distant cousin. Do you believe that? So, it's always good to see them up there. Yes. I'm gonna really come. It's, we're going up for Thanksgiving.
It's for Thanksgiving, man, though.
We rent it out. The family, and stuff like that. That's a lot of fun. Come horse race season. Oh, man.
Can't find a spot up there sometimes, as well.
Oh, I know. Yeah. Yeah, we're, I, we're gonna sell it. Sell it, my great-grandpa had a change of part last minute. Thank God we got to keep... Property taxes are very high, man.
Yeah.
I heard noise, too. It's showtime. All right. Showtime, let's... Let's do it, and let's go watch some football. How are you? Good to see you.
You going to a game tonight?
I am. Awesome. Now that I have permission, great. How are you? That's fun.
It's going, it's going well? Good to see you.
That took a little longer. That took a little longer.
Busy folks.
Oh, yeah.
It just takes a while.
Wow. It's awesome. We put a microphone there and get...
What, what part is that on?
Sicar. Arrow, right, good. Big.
How's it going?
It's going well. How about you?
Pretty good. I'm tired. Need to get to a football game, too. Need to get to a football game.
Uh, what time is the sort?
Seven.
I think you'll make it.
Yeah. Well, we may not, 'cause we have to bash and tear up the... We have to go, or they won't have a course.
Uh-uh.
So, there's no way around it.
Where is Singarapu? Good, that's when his class is done, boy.
Oh, I tell you what. I'm in.
Should somebody tell them that they don't have to be quiet?
You could lead a cheer. Cameron can lead a cheer.
No, I'm okay, thank you.
These days, I'm gonna install a heater down here to keep me from freezing today.
You know, I had a principal that used to have do that. He used to keep a little heater under his desk.
Well, I know a lot of people who do.
Yeah, he, um, he suffered frostbite in, uh, in Korea.
Hey, why can't it back here?
I don't know.
I'll just drop it here.
It ultimately killed him, I mean...
Really?
Yeah. He had very bad circulation.
I don't think that I have ever had frostbite, except in my own imagination, but I'm always good.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I actually don't.
Pretty much always.
Say hello to everybody.
What's that?
Say hello to everybody.
Yeah, well, you gotta get them to know.
They're similar, aren't they?
Thanks. Just writing on the requirement. Be left off, so it's... If it isn't one thing, it's another.
That has the time, just give it.
Please excuse the delay today. I know this is, everyone is very anxious, and we are ready to call this meeting to order. Ms. Hall, could you take role?
Mr. Frank?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Castro?
Here.
I'm here, you're here. Hail, hail.
Okay. I'd like to welcome our student advisor today, Cameron Castillo from Centennial High School. He is a sophomore, and, uh, we welcome him. We have, uh, other students in our... If you could just stand up for a second, uh, from our student advisory, we welcome them as well. And, um, I am going to, um, ask, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda, because in our haste, uh, we did not include the closed executive session, which I need to report on, and in order to do so, it must be on the agenda. So, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include the closed, the report on the closed executive session.
My second.
Okay. Ms. Hall first, Mr. Castro second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the agenda is now amended, and we will probably, uh, do this again at our next board meeting as well. So, I am, um, going to report. We had a, a closed executive session, uh, where we discussed limited personnel matters to discuss selection of superintendent, including terms of superintendent contract offer as permitted under section ten dash fifteen dash one, H. two, of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act. No other matters were discussed, and no action was taken. The, um, the, uh, meeting started at two oh two, and it finished at four twelve. So, that is the report. I now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Castillo, good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
Thank you for being with us today.
Thank you for having me.
It's an honor to have you up here with us. Madam President, this is a discussion of revisions to the Tomba Elementary School plaque and the Central Office plaque. We, we actually included that as part of our research, and I had asked Mrs., Ms. Galván to, uh, do the research for us, and so I'll ask her to do the report out to you. And this came to the board at the request of a community member through, uh, Board Member Castro.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sanchez. As Dr. Sanchez indicated, we received information primarily through, um, Mr. Castro, that potentially there was a problem with two of the plaques that we put on our buildings at the very last stage of a construction project. So, we looked through that, and what I did was go and research old board minutes, and that was fun. And, uh, what I'm, was looking for is the protocol to put the plaque of who was on the board at the time. It's at the time that a bid is accepted. So, for an example, the bid to do your Hermosa Heights project will be you with Madam President Flatus as the president, the superintendent will be the interim superintendent, and those are the names in that order that will be on the plaque, even though the project won't be done until after we have different members of the board. So, that is how we gauge on who's on the plaque and with what titles. So, in the research that I did for the Central Office, I did look at the minutes. It, it was clear that the time of the, of the plaque for this building, the superintendent was Jesse Gonzalez, uh, and the board members, as the way the plaque reads now, is correct, and there are no modifications that are necessary, because it is correct. Now, with regard to Tomba is another story. The time that the bid was accepted for Tomba Elementary School, uh, which was built in nineteen eighty-nine, the superintendent at the time was Harold Floyd, known to us as Bill Floyd. Dr. Edward Fernandez was the associate superintendent, and in those days, um, prior to nineteen ninety, the plaques also included the name of the associate superintendent for support services. And then the, who was on the board, um, they are not in the right order of who was the president, vice president, and so forth. And so, uh, we did see that there is an issue with the Tomba plaque. Um, we are recommending that we have that plaque changed with the correct superintendent and the order of which the board should be mentioned. It should be that Jose Fritz was the president, then Jeanette Dickerson, vice president, Secretary Tucker, Ruben Alvarado's a member, Patsy Duran was a member, and then that we add, uh, Dr. Edward Fernandez, who at that time, we did add the associate superintendents to the plaque, um, and that that be changed. I think, I wanna say from memory, we think that plaque might cost about a thousand dollars to redo, um, and that we get that fixed. And if you have any questions at this point, I stand for questions.
Board members, questions? Comments?
So, get it fixed. So, we do.
We can bring it back to your next meeting as an action item, so that you can give official approval.
So, then, do you have any comments, Mr. Castro?
Amendment, uh, President, uh, the only comment I have to do is, I have to say is that I think, uh, it's very appropriate that we correct, uh, right or wrong that happened in the past, and it's, I think it's symbolic that we, you know, we were role models to bless the community, and, uh, this is the right thing to do.
Okay.
And Madam President, um, we will also recommend that in the future, we bring forth a new policy that deals with construction, but part of either the, the policy or part of the regulation will be how we determine who goes on the plaque, so that everyone knows for sure that, um, it's who was on the board at the time of the bid.
Right, so it, it will be made public, so people will, will have a chance to speak up. Well, we feel that it's important to make this correction, as much for the persons that were involved, as for the Tomba Elementary, which is my home school, so definitely, I feel, um, I ask, um, staff to go ahead and proceed with the corrections.
We'll bring that forward for a vote next month.
Okay.
Or next meeting.
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
Thank you very much.
November, we'll bring it forward for a vote, Madam President, at the, uh, November fifteenth meeting, I think it is, and we'll have the details about the cost and, um, at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Mm-hmm. And we move on to finance, to Ms. Valdez.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Sanchez. This evening, we'd like to, we'd like to bring a request for a proposal for the Hermosa Heights multi-purpose room. At the October eighteenth meeting, the bid was approved by the board, and this evening, we'd like approval for the complete RFP, which includes the, the bid.
Okay. Uh, board members, do any, does anyone have questions or comments? Okay. Just in regard to the RFP. Okay, so, do you have a question?
Yeah, we have to vote on this.
Yes, we're gonna vote on it. We only voted on what part of it last time, Ms. Valdez?
On the bid, which was just pricing.
Okay. On the bid. We only voted on the bid the last time. So, now, we're going, we're, we're making sure we complete the loop with the request for proposal.
Correct.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to approve request for proposal number sixteen, uh, dash seventeen dash oh one P., which includes the bid for our Hermosa Heights Elementary School multi-purpose addition project.
That's a move.
Okay, Mr. Davis first, and, uh, Mr. Castro second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any oppositions? Okay, so that passes. Thank you, Ms. Valdez. This now takes us on to new business. We have a policy. JFABB. And, um, let's see, is anyone, are you gonna talk about it? Okay.
I'll, I'll talk about that.
Dr. Sanchez, it's JFABB, foreign exchange and international students.
Thank you, Madam President. A request was made, um, from personnel at New Mexico State University, the Office of International Studies, that our policy include international students. Right now, the existing policy, JFABB, uh, only talks about foreign exchange students. The policy, as it goes through, Bill, if you pull up the policy, you can see that we have rewritten the purpose of this policy is to ensure foreign exchange and international students are able to participate and/or enroll in LCPS. We then go through the background, uh, and in the definitions to... The foreign exchange students are students who come in on a foreign exchange program, and they usually spend one year here. An international student is a student who, again, is kind of like the foreign exchange student, but are actually recruited by universities. They complete their high, their senior year here, and then they matriculate into the, into NMSU. So, this policy merely adds the provision, the board's approval, of allowing international students, just like foreign exchange students, to enter into our school. And that is basically... And that is basically the only change to this policy, Madam President, members of the board. With that, we'll stand for questions. This is first reading. It'll go through two other readings before approval.
Board members, any questions or comments? I actually met with Professor.
Chevronak.
Chevronak. And he explained to me the difference of the international student versus the foreign exchange student. And I think that this would bring some, some interesting exchanges for our own students here in Las Cruces, to meet students from other countries. And most of them would be coming from China, Vietnam, Cambodia, Laos, but a good opportunity for our students as well.
And Madam President, to that point, it's also good to mention, Bill, if you go to page two of this, we actually outline the fact that these students do pay tuition that's established by the state of New Mexico.
That's right.
And those monies come directly to the district.
So it's not a free ride for these international students. Their parents pay for it. Okay. If there's no questions, then we will go ahead and move on. And I'm just wondering, just before, I'm going to take a point of order here. There is no room for student comment anywhere on our, on this particular work session. We didn't take any, did we?
I know that our student advisor does have some prepared comments, but.
Okay, so we'll save it.
I think those would be for board reports.
Okay. It's not on here, though. Pardon me? Okay, okay. So, well, we'll just, we'll just include you in public input, okay? I apologize for that, but it's, we're not on the agenda right now, but I just want to make sure that we hear what you have to say today, okay? All right. Are we ready to move on to the next item, which is the selection of superintendent, including approval of terms of contract offer? Are we ready to go?
We're ready.
Okay. Okay, as you know, we've been, this has been a five-month process for us and we want to, first of all, thank Dr. Sanchez and his staff for all the help that they have done to create this wonderful, easy, transparent process that the board has gone through. We could not have done it without Dr. Sanchez's help and with the staff that have helped and put this together. So I'd like to compliment and thank them personally right now for this, for this effort. So then, I will move forward. I will entertain a motion to make an offer of employment to Dr. Gregory Ewing to serve as superintendent of the Las Cruces Public Schools under the terms of the New Mexico Uniform Administrator Contract, beginning on December 5th, 2016. And it would be an 18-month contract, so it would end June 30th, 2017.
Eighteen.
Oh, eighteen. Okay, sorry. Eighteen. For, with a starting salary of $165,000 per fiscal year and conditioned on his written acceptance of the terms, conditions, and benefits as recommended by our interim superintendent and legal counsel in session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr. Frank and a second from Ms. Hall. We will now do a roll call vote.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And I vote yes, so we will now make the offer to Dr. Ewing. So.
Madam President.
Next step.
I am, I'm, I'm going to call.
We have a phone.
Yeah, we have a phone right here.
Do you want to sit here?
No, that's fine. I think I can speak louder. You think so? I know, it is. We might even get a meal out of it, huh? Yeah. Yeah, it's early.
Does he have the key turn something?
Here, yeah.
Is by the speaker?
Yes.
Hello? Good afternoon, Dr. Ewing. This is Stephen Sanchez with the Las Cruces Public Schools, who are here in open meeting. And I'll ask Ms., our president of our board to continue.
Dr. Ewing, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is Maria Flores. I would like to let you know that the board has unanimously voted to offer to you the superintendency of Las Cruces Public Schools. And the terms of, the terms of the contract is to start December 5th, 2016, for 18 months. It ends on June 30th, 2018, for $165,000 per fiscal year. It includes an annual leave, a district standard of 15 days plus six additional days, sick leave of 10 days plus two additional days, school vehicle, cellphone service, and internet service. And I would like to know if you accept.
Sure. Well, Madam President and members of the board, I certainly want to thank the board for this opportunity and the trust that you are instilling in me. It will be my honor and my privilege to be your next superintendent.
I hope you realize that was applause in your favor, sir.
Thank you. I'm very excited and I look forward to working with the Las Cruces students, the teachers, the parents, the classified staff, and the community. I think you are great and I just want to work with you to make us even better.
And, well, we thank you, sir, and we are looking forward to working together, okay?
Thank you. I am, I am humbled and I thank you and I thank the board.
Okay. Thank you and have a good evening, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
A glass of wine might be in order.
Thank you.
For all of us. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay.
You have a new superintendent.
Yes, yay. Okay, so we will go ahead and I think we'll start public input with our student advisor. Is that, if that's okay?
All right, well, Madam President, thank you very much. I'm excited. New opportunity, kind of a, little bit of a hit of the reset button here. It's going to be a lot of fun. I look forward to it. First of all, I want to thank, like you said before, Dr. Sanchez and his staff for coming in here in July and getting us a new superintendent, the one that we feel is the best for our district. I think the process was, and I've talked to a lot of people, the process is incomparable compared to what goes on definitely across the state of New Mexico and the nation. It was, the transparency of the process was second to none. When we got together back in July at Cruces High School for that meeting with the eight sectors of the community to get together to determine the criteria for our next superintendent, that was the best thing ever for the community. It really shows you that this board does trust and value what this community has to say. And from a student's perspective, I think I can go ahead and speak on behalf of the rest of the LCPS Student Advisory Council to say that we were very impressed and we felt very honored to be a part of this process. We also had the opportunity to be on the interview committee for these superintendents. And with that, we really did get to gauge their personalities beyond that professional personality that everyone gives you in a job interview. We really kind of got to know these people throughout the day and we really, really appreciate that. Dr. Sanchez, I know you asked me to give a quick update on the Student Advisory Council, Student Advisory Council right now. I'll be honest with you. I know, Ms. Hammond, we're not where we need to be yet. We're not where we want to be yet. We're still working on things regarding participation and involvement from all of the high schools. We've had communication issues. But with our next meeting, which I believe is November 14th, we hope to get all that sorted out. Right now, our interim president is Tristan, a senior at Mayfield High School. And hopefully by the 14th, we'll have enough people from all the different schools to be able to elect new officers for this coming year.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Cameron, for your report. And we're not losing hope in the student advisory. On the contrary, I think we're doing it right. That's, and I thanked Ms. Hammond for her help.
Absolutely.
Okay?
And I hope you all realize that we are the only school district in the state of New Mexico and probably one of the few in the country that actually has a student sitting up here on the dais. I couldn't be more thankful for the opportunity. It's a great way to involve students in the procedures and policymaking of our school district. If you didn't have student voice, what are you doing? What are you all here to do? It's to serve us. So having a student representative up here on the dais, week in and week out, make sure that you guys can do your job effectively.
Aren't we proud of our students overall? Okay, so do we have any public input? Because I don't have any cards or, yes, Mr. Hartman.
Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Sanchez, I'm Bruce Hartman from NEA Las Cruces. I want to personally thank the board for the process that you engaged in for the selection of our new superintendent. I feel that you really did a good job of soliciting input and involving as many, as many stakeholders as possible. And we are excited to begin working with Dr. Ewing. And I do agree with the board's selection. I do feel that he has, he is the most qualified, definitely has the most experience. And I just felt that he was a breath of fresh air with his, with his ideas and I think we need that. Because I, I do think that we have a lot of issues in the district that we need to work on. Morale, you know, things like that. And I think that he, he displays the attributes to identify those and try to address them. I don't know if the people in the audience know this or not, but Dr. Ewing was awarded April of 2016, he was awarded the National Hispanic Serving Administrator in the United States by President Obama. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Any, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, members of the board, President Flores and Dr. Sanchez. You know, I'm usually up here to complain, so I figured I'd mix it up a little bit. I just want to second what Bruce said and really commend the board on the process that you guys allowed everybody to partake in. Even in speaking to the, to the candidates for the position, they were all highly impressed at how open and transparent the process was and how much the community actually was involved. So I'd just like to thank all of you guys. I'm extremely pleased with your decision and I think that it's a great thing that you guys have been doing for our community and I'm really excited moving forward, so.
And can you just state your name for the record?
Naomi Valdez.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, well, because we've had a rather long session here for ourselves, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.